Call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission, February 11th, 2011. First, I'd like to acknowledge the board members that are joining us via call-in. I believe George Galt is on line with us.
I'm here.
Thank you. Maren, could you?
Yeah, I'm ready for you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. For our board member who's on the line, Councilman George Galt, he just confirmed that he is there. In the chamber, we also have Director Christina Swallow on the line. Can we just confirm that you're on there?
Present.
Thank you. Then in the chambers, we have Mayor Pro Tem Stavros Anthony, Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone, Mayor Carolyn Goodman, Commissioner Justin Jones, Chairwoman Deborah March, Mayor Karenin McManus, and Commissioner Tick Sagerblum. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Ms. Maynard, I'll now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman March and members of the board. The first item on the agenda is to conduct your first citizens' participation period in support of the Nevada State Governor's recommendations made on November 10th, 2020 to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in pursuit to the March 22nd, 2020 Declaration of Emergency Directive 006, which suspended the requirement to have a physical location for public meetings and for the health and safety of the community. This meeting is being held virtually. To allow for public participation, the RTC is accepting public comments via email at Comments could be submitted to be read aloud or to be added directly to the written record. Ms. Maren Dubois will read the public comments received by the RTC.
Thank you. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on agenda items, things that are included on the agenda. Do we have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Maren Dubois for the record. We do not have any comments for this public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maynard.
Thank you. The next item is to approve the agenda. The agenda is in order and ready to be approved.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments, or can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Ms. Maynard?
Thank you, Chairwoman March. The next item on the agenda is to elect a vice chair.
Thank you. From our last meeting, we had three members of our board, Commissioner Justin Jones, Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone, and Councilman Galt, who were interested in serving as vice chair. I'm thrilled that so many of you have volunteered to participate in this important role and commit yourself to serving as a vice chair. And the RTC plays an important role in our community, and your willingness to serve in that role is a testament to your commitment. And I'm grateful to have all of you on our board. Prior to this meeting, Councilman Galt informed me that he would like to withdraw his name from consideration as vice chair. Is that correct, Councilman?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Galt, and we appreciate your commitment to this organization. Per action taken at the January RTC board meeting, Commissioner Jones and Mayor Pro Tem Barone will each be given an opportunity to present today on why they should be selected as vice chair, answering the three questions in the not-to-exceed-five-minute presentation. For the record, all board members, including the nominees, were provided with the following questions in advance of this meeting. What qualities would you bring to the vice chair position that we might not already know about? What are the most significant transportation challenges that you believe Southern Nevada will face in the next three years? And as vice chair, what would be your top three goals for the agency to accomplish in the next three years? And to determine the order of presenters, I've randomly selected pieces of paper from an envelope that contained the names of the nominees in front of these individuals. And based on the random drawing, Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone will go first, followed by Commissioner Justin Jones. And for consistency purposes and to ensure that each nominee is given equal time, we are limiting all presentations to five minutes and ask that there be no discussion prior to the vote. A motion to vote on a vice chair will be taken directly after the presentations, and we will vote based on seniority. Just a reminder, there needs to be five votes in favor of a single candidate to appoint a vice chair. With this, we'll begin the presentations. Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, I want to go ahead and just knock out, actually, I want to go ahead and just thank everyone here who was in attendance, either watching or here present. I'm going to go ahead and just knock out the most significant challenges. The most significant challenge period is protecting the long-term economic viability of the Regional Transportation Commission and the services that it provides in transportation and infrastructure. Now, most of these challenges are mostly shifts in our economy. They're presented, you know, I mean, one example, of course, this so-called rideshare that has been, quite frankly, a threat here to the RTC. It saps away ridership from the RTC in mass transit along lucrative routes, and of course, these routes help finance everything that we do off the strip. But that's just one example. I mean, I can go ahead and go on and on. There's other emerging technologies, a tunnel project, you know, which, on one hand, it might be very good for providing transportation on the strip, but on the other hand, there's some other challenges that it presents to RTC. The growth for the community, it's growing at exponential rate. There's greater pressures for the RTC meet the transportation demands of this community, right? And then, if you have, if you work with young people like I do, they own less cars, which, you know, you would think that'd be a good thing, but then they still need transportation. And we have not necessarily met to these challenges for the younger generation that will take more and more, a bigger part of our economy. And of course, you know, I'd be remiss, COVID and reopening COVID and making sure we have a safe platform for people to travel in, these are big challenges, obviously. As for goals, well, I'll get those a little bit later here. Things that you don't know about me to begin with, you may not, the public may not know about this, but I've been an educator for 27 years. I'm well-rounded enough to be part of a dynamic team that brought back the third-largest city in Nevada from the brink of dissolution. And there's no bankruptcy, only dissolution for cities who can't make their financial commitments. Fiscal stewardship, strategic investment in people, streamlined business practices, increased user friendliness for clients, our residents, vision for development, innovative technology implementation have all been hallmarks where our little cities pushed back from the edge. I'm happy to say that, hey, we've also been, we've done a lot to refinance. At one point, our bond status had junk status. It now has pretty, now we're pretty good, we've been able to refinance and save our residents millions of dollars, you know, in the long run here. It's been a team effort, but I've also been there to actually contribute my share of that vision. What you don't see about, maybe what you see, but you don't see about me, I'm the first Latino councilman in the only minority-majority city in the state. I already mentioned I'm a public school teacher. Public transportation for me isn't something that I'm doing for career building. I'm mad about it, I'm adamant about it, and I'm also fanatical, almost fanatical about it, because RTC provides, for my residents, my students, my neighbors, they provide the very means which they have, that they need to go to educate themselves, to be able to provide shelter and food for their own families. I was around for the bad old days, again, that crummy Las Vegas Transit, and I had to witness firsthand, my parents trudge home a mile or more after working a full-time shift in a casino, my mom as a kitchen worker, my dad as a, my dad as a kitchen worker, my mom as a maid, because of course, the limited interest that then Las Vegas Transit had in providing any sort of bus service that wasn't connected to the strip. I rode those buses as a teenager, and I can tell you, when I rode, the last time I rode the 113 route that goes right past my own neighborhood, it's night and day. And I have RTC and of course, the city leaders here, the valley leaders, to thank for providing this service. Really, I feel it's a question of representation and equal opportunity. You know, I think I'm the only person outside of the mayor here who actually represents the north/northeast parts of our valley. Okay? Now, we have a great chair, the mayor of the great city of Henderson, and I'm sure she and other members, they know all about the challenges on the south end of the valley. I get it. But I don't know if my colleagues actually understand what it means to have a simple bus turnout along a major thoroughfare. That thoroughfare, like Cheyenne, which we designed and conceived at a time when we didn't have the current design standards. What does it mean to traffic flow and to safety? It means a lot. And I have the RTC and NDOT to think for those kind of things happening. What I do is give a voice to people who actually use these systems, and that's a voice that's not heard. There's only six elected officials amongst the 37 local elected officials, and I counted among all these other boards, there's only one, only one person in the leadership, a vice chair, my good friend Olivia Diaz, who's a vice chair. We talk about, we always talk about diversity, but do we actually believe in it? Well, diversity has a lot more. I'm a hometown guy. I was educated by the councilmen to my left, and I worked my way through college, actually working for the mayor there. Okay? I think I represent people who are chronically and always underrepresented and certainly are, don't have the same access to things, like even simple things, 89030, 890101. We know right now they are not leading in getting vaccines. Underrepresented and certainly underserved.
Thank you. Very much. Ms. Chair?
Big Madam Chair and members of the board, and thank you again for your support as vice chair of the Regional Flood Control District. While I am new to this board, I'm not new to the RTC. I first came to appreciate the RTC 20 years ago. Having just moved back to Las Vegas, living with my in-laws and sharing one car with my wife to save up money, I frequently took advantage of the cat bus to get around town. And to be frank, I have some fond memories of that. I wish frankly that I had the opportunity now to jump on a bus and be able to read instead of having to get into a car to get anywhere. While serving in the Nevada Legislature, I had the opportunity to work with RTC leaders, including Ms. Castro, to ensure the passage of fuel revenue indexing, arguably the RTC's most important legislative priority in the last decade. Although I've not served on the RTC board these last two years since I was elected a county commissioner, Ms. Maynard can attest that I have met with her and other RTC leaders numerous times over the past few years to advocate for expanded transit and paratransit options, to discuss advancement of RTC's long-term funding priorities. As chair of the SNRPC, I frequently engage with the RTC's MPO and SNS team, including the review and approval of their recent work plan. And I've previously worked with RTC's counsel, Greg Gilbert, and RTC lobbyist Ed Garcia for several years. I'm not going to repeat myself from earlier, but to reiterate, when I commit to something, I'm fully committed. Since being appointed to the board just last month, I've had several briefings from RTC staff digging into the financials to understand the various funding sources, from motor vehicle fuel tax to FRI to Q10 to federal planning grants for our MPO. I've spent my weekends nerding out on the best practices for roadway design, complete streets policies, active transportation and transit. I've spoken with members of our federal delegation regarding stimulus funding for transit and infrastructure. I've spoken with the recently appointed senior advisor for policy to Secretary Buttigieg, who wrote his campaign's infrastructure plan about our community's transportation and transit needs and priorities. I've spoken with state legislative leaders about RTC priorities, including the chair of the Senate Growth and Infrastructure Committee, who I just spoke to two days ago. I shot a video for the RTC Bike Share Program on bike safety, and I'm already planning an RTC Bus Tour event with my colleague, Commissioner Sagerblum. To cut to the chase on why I'm interested in being vice chair, this next year will fundamentally shape the next decade for the RTC and the future of growth in our community, and I want to help shape it. Transit-oriented development and infrastructure are priorities for the incoming administration, and there is a potential for hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funding headed this way, if we're ready. I've already studied the administration's priorities, reached out to federal and state leaders, and have both the time and interest to jump on a call or jump on a plane to Carson City or DC if that's what it takes, to get every transit dollar possible and advance RTC's priorities. But federal funding can't be the RTC's sole source of transit funding. With the projected funding shortfall in 2026, it is likely the RTC will need to go to the voters with a ballot initiative before then. I've already been having those discussions with staff for more than a year now. I know what it takes to get a ballot initiative passed because I was a founding advisory board member and leader for Ballot Question 2, which passed by the voters in 2016. Ballot questions don't happen overnight, they must be planned years in advance due to their legal complexity, need for fundraising, and conflicts with other ballot initiatives. Transit is changing rapidly. Whether it is ripe for transit or not, the Boring Company is just on the horizon, promising to move people cheaper, cleaner, and faster than any current technology, and we must be ready to quickly adapt. I know Chair March is ready to take on these existential issues head-on, and I want to be by her side, learning and assisting to advance RTC's priorities. As with Flood, if you elect me vice chair, I commit to sitting down with each of you individually to understand your community's challenges, as Councilman Barone stated. I will work collaboratively with each of you, not with my hat on as county commissioner, but as an RTC leader focused on transit and transportation to serve the whole community across every jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those presentations. I'd now like to make a motion to vote on the vice chair. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that motion carries. And as I mentioned before, we'll cast our votes in order of seniority. Board members will be asked to state the name of the nominee that they wish to vote for. The first person to reach five votes will be elected as vice chair. We have a motion to vote. Any other discussions?
Yes, I would. First of all, I want to thank you both, and Councilman Galt, thank you very much. I think it's wonderful to see a passion that you want to move into this position and help our chair, and obviously, it's critical, it's a critical time for transportation, infrastructure everywhere, especially here in our own state, having just gone through so many different issues. But with the withdrawal, I want to ask a couple of things. I wanted to know, first of all, Ms. Maynard, the duties of the chair, vice chair, excuse me.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me, but I believe it's very similar to what Steve Ferrison, Regional Flood, defined as vice chair duties.
Okay. And because this is the RTC portion, I'm going to turn to Greg Gilbert to ask him about the duration or the need for a chair.
Thank you. The answer is relatively similar to the prior board's answer. In this case, we, the person that serves as the vice chair will serve through July, and then we will have another vote as it relates to that position. It's an every-year vote, so you can look forward to this again in July.
And our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30 through June 30?
Yes.
So we would be holding that in June, or would we wait till after the fiscal year?
That's a good question. I think the answer is that it would be preferred to vote in the month of July, so it would be agendized for a July vote.
Well, having served with Councilman Barone these past few years together and been very helpful and very instrumental, and certainly knowing that Councilman Galt representing Mesquite would have been interesting, because certainly with Laughlin and Boulder City, they're part of our Southern Nevada area too, and brings a whole new look at that. But too, with the comments made by Commissioner and only having been here a month, but with a rich background with the legislature, the very important time, and your willingness to get in and find out and speak with everybody, the particularities and the different boards upon which you sit, the time's going to be, and I did say at our Flood meeting, you're not going to see too much of your family, or you're not going to sleep. So, one of the most important things I have realized over a lifetime, it's very important for leadership to be able to have a part in selecting who are closest to them. And granted, this is a six-month position right now, it's an opportunity at the next time for others, again, to put their hats forward in the ring. But I feel it's very important, especially this year, after how many years you've been with?
Eleven.
Chair, 11 years with Chair Brown, who did a superior job, and I know you found, working as have everybody on staff, phenomenal, so devoted, in particular of all the different committees and commissions, he sat on this one, had his heart and soul, as did Flood. And so, you have to prioritize your time in life, but I am going to stay with the chair on the chair selection here, because I think it's important to have that continuity. And so, I want to thank you, Councilman Galt, and Mayor Pro Tem Barone, and certainly Commissioner Jones, for wanting to help and wanting to make this happen. So, with that, I don't know if others have comments, but that's me.
Any other comments? Comments, okay. We'll go ahead and move on to the vote, and if you'll call out names.
So, Mayor, you, excuse me, Chairwoman March, you're first to vote.
Thank you. And I concur with the mayor and her comments. I'm so grateful to be able to work with our wonderful board members, and all of us are committed to serving our communities and to making a difference. And I know that we have some challenges ahead, there are certainly new milestones ahead of us because of different changing dynamics in the pandemic and other issues, and I support all of our commissioners, and at this time, I am going to vote for Justin Jones.
And Mayor Carolyn Goodman?
I did just get a text from a dear friend to remind me never to forget ADA, and how important it is that as this moves forward, and I certainly know with Mayor Pro Tem that you have a special part, and your heart and mind for all ADA-related individuals and issues for the RTC, and I'm sure you do too. So, with that, to support our chair, I'm going to also vote for Commissioner Jones.
Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone?
Yeah, I'll vote for myself, thank you.
Councilman George Galt?
I vote for Commissioner Jones.
Mayor Karenin McManus?
I vote for Commissioner Jones.
Mayor Pro Tem Stavros Anthony?
Isaac Barone.
Commissioner Justin Jones?
I vote for myself.
Commissioner Tick Sagerblum?
Christopher Jones.
With that, Commissioner Jones is now our vice chair, and thank you all for your participation in this process. Thank you. Ms. Maynard?
Thank you, Chairwoman March. The next two items on the agenda, which are items four and five, are to receive the CEO and NDOT director's report. In an effort to keep the meeting brief, to accommodate another event, we will not provide a CEO or NDOT director's report this month. However, we will provide those updates at a future meeting. Next on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. This consists of items six through 49, and can be taken in one motion.
Agenda? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman March. The next item is item 50, is to appoint three members and an alternate of RTC Finance Committee. The RTC's Finance Committee meets to review the RTC's budget for the following fiscal year and directs staff as to which items should be considered for the inclusion in the budget and is comprised of members of the board.
I'd like to encourage our members to volunteer. It's a great opportunity. I've served on this committee for several years now, and you really learn a lot about the RTC and its functioning, and I would like to volunteer. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested, and again, learning and growing from that opportunity.
And Isaac?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was an alternate last time, and although I was ready and standing by to jump in, it never happened, so I would like to go ahead and be considered to be a member of that three-person chair, I mean, three-person committee.
Wonderful. Anyone else?
This is George Galt. I'd also like to volunteer.
Okay, so we have, actually, there are four of us, so even though one would be an alternate, we could have all four of us at the meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So we do have, do you need a motion to adopt that slate?
Yes.
Okay, that would be my motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
All right. Item 51 is our standing legal item, and there are no matters to bring before the board at this time, so we can move on to the next item, which is item 52. It is your last and final citizens' participation period.
So this is the final citizen participation period. As Ms. Maynard mentioned before, this meeting is being held without a physical location for the public to attend, to allow the public to participate. The RTC is accepting public comment via email and publiccomments@rtcsnv.com. Do we have any comments or emails for the record?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have three. The first is from Shelley Jones. She says, "The majority of the RTC paratransit drivers are really cool. I know a lot of them, and my hat goes off because they are very hardworking and it is very stressful out there. There are some drivers that are relatively new that need to be retrained. Like my driver this morning lied and said he rung the doorbell. Funny thing is, I don't have a doorbell. Not only that, but if he was to stick his finger in the hole, he would get electrocuted. Plus, I have little dogs, and they bark at everything that comes in this little cul-de-sac. There was no bus. Nobody came to the door. My dogs didn't bark. On that note, the majority of the drivers are really cool that I know, and they know me very well, and they know that I have little dogs. And I've called to complain before, and people have heard my little dogs as well. On Tango, Tango is great. I love Tango. I think the ride should be extended to 46 rides instead of 22." That completes Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Robin Kincaid. She writes, "Good morning, commissioners. My name is Robin Kincaid, and I am speaking today as a mom and a citizen who is interested in all Nevadans having access to services in their community. My daughter Kayla is a young adult with disabilities, lives in the service area, and uses paratransit services. She cannot attend services at our church, which has been in the same place for over 20 years in the Summerlin area, because it is located outside the service area. She cannot pick up an item at our assigned post office because someone at RTC decided that a post office is not an essential service within her community. I have been speaking to the commission for the past two years, and I still cannot obtain the process used to either determine the fixed route or open the inlet area so that there is access to post offices, churches, appointments, schools, and other essential services. Asking the RTC administration staff for this process has been frustrating experience with no response. I urge the commission to consider the following. Explore a premium rate for paratransit services beyond the federally required minimum service area. Please consider adding this to the March agenda. Provide a step-by-step process that helps the community understand how established areas of our city who cannot receive any service be able to receive paratransit services. Paratransit riders are not second-class citizens that must be told where to live, where to work, and where to recreate. It is important that the commission and the public work together to make our community a welcome place for persons with disabilities. I would like to bring to your attention the following concerns. Although my daughter did receive some instruction and understand her text notifications that are in military time, it is still difficult for her and requires her to locate her sheet to convert to AM/PM time. Why are persons with disabilities singled out to receive communication in this format? Other notifications and materials to persons without disabilities do not have to complete this conversion. My daughter attends UNLV and has twice had tremendous difficulty in getting picked up from Bus Stop 11. In one instance, the professor of the class found the driver book on Box Street around the corner, and he had to be directed to the bus stop. Another instance, the driver never found the bus stop, and my daughter was told to stand in the dark for another two hours. I am requesting that additional training occur to help the drivers find the locations of bus stops on the UNLV campus. I filed a complaint over a week ago, and the response I received was that they would talk to the driver. I would like to request some additional training be provided. Thank you for listening. I urge you to ask RTC questions and work with the community members to resolve issues and try to understand that persons with disabilities deserve access to transportation."
Thank you.
And finally, we have from Ms. Stephanie Versnik. "Good morning, commissioners. My name is Stephanie Versnik, and again, I am testifying before you for the 36th time. I am a mom speaking on behalf of my son, Christian, who does not drive due to his autism. Christian works at the Nellis Air Force Base commissary and has been a federal employee for the last 18 years. I drive him to work in the mornings, and the RTC bus picks him up in the afternoon and drops him off at the Centennial Hills library area. I pick him up at the library and drive the seven minutes to my home because I live a half-mile outside of the service. I continue to testify each month for three years. I have been asking this RTC commission to expand the service area in this community. In these challenging times, people need essential services. Transportation is an essential service. Many people are in isolation, or people..." For people with disabilities who don't have access to transportation, they live in isolation every day. By not having access to transportation impacts their fundamental right to be a part of this community, a sense of belonging. When you don't have transportation, you can't be independent. You must always depend on someone else to take you places. People with disabilities have lives. They go to work. They have friends. They like to go out, just like you do. Have you ever had to depend on someone to take you where you need to go? Have you ever been without transportation? Think about it. Walk in someone else's shoes just for a minute. Transportation is not a luxury. It is an essential service. Until this commission expands the service area, which should have been done a long time ago, I will continue to testify and ask this commission to develop an affordable premium service plan option for people who live outside of the service area. For one year, I have asked this commission to develop a plan and add it to the agenda as a voting item. In the last 12 months, I have not heard from anyone regarding my request. There has been no attempts to communicate with me regarding this option. Until my son's needs are met, I will continue to testify for services that is rightfully his. Due to COVID and not being able to testify in person, I submit my testimony each month to be read on the record. I continue to hope that in the near future, this commission will prioritize the needs of this community and make people with disabilities without transportation a number-one priority. People with disabilities deserve no less. My son deserves it. Again, I am requesting to have a proposed affordable premium service plan added to the March's agenda and ask this commission to be prepared to discuss and vote. I am, again, hoping that my request is recognized and not ignored for the 12th time. This concludes your public comments."
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.